Good evening. I call this February 8th, 2022, Meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On February 11th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org, bless you, /government/livevideo. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Our town vision statement is: A sustainable and thriving community that celebrates diversity and inclusion while enhancing the well-being of the people who live, work, and play in Morrisville. Our adopted values include dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. Please silence all cell phones while in council chambers. Sergeant Penland, in the rear of the room, has been a law enforcement officer for 21 years and is currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. We appreciate him being our sergeant-at-arms this evening. It is my honor to provide the indication this evening, and I'd just like to share some of my favorite phrases about beginnings. The beginning is always today. It is never too late to be what you might have been. The first step towards getting somewhere is to decide you're not going to stay where you are. Change can be scary, but you know what's scarier? Allowing fear to stop you from growing, evolving, and progressing. Your life does not get better by chance; it gets better by change. Champions keep playing until they get it right. Do not wait until the conditions are perfect to begin. Beginning makes the conditions perfect. Your present circumstances don't determine where you can go; they merely determine where you start. The magic in new beginnings is truly the most powerful of them all. If not us, then who? If not now, then when? And perhaps one of my all-time favorites: A journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step. Let our town's journey begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Those who are able to rise, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policies to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict or interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member want to share any statements about that at this time? Okay. Seeing none, is there any adjustments to the agenda that any council members would like to make? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to propose that we defer Work Session 13B, Town Council Winter Meeting, General Discussion and Brainstorming, to the Work Session on February 15th.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay. Would Town Manager Page like to share any thoughts about that motion?
I can make brief comments at Council Manager Comments and just give council a quick synopsis of what to expect on February 15th.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt this evening's agenda with the amendment.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That carries 6-0. Apologies for the procedural gaffe there. Oh, well. Okay. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: A resolution demonstrating support to maintain landscaping along Lewis Stevens Drive, a resolution authorizing execution of NC DOT local agreement for the Church Street sidewalk project, and a BOA allocating additional Powell bill funds. Does any council member wish to discuss any of these items before we vote on them? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I move, I make a motion to adopt this consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0 as well. We are now at Item 8, Administrative Reports. There is one administrative report tonight, an Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1 Project Update. Administrative reports are provided as information on the items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Just for the public, that is part of our agenda, so if you want more details about that one, you can find it online. Item 9, Presentations. We have one presentation tonight recognizing Morrisville 101 graduates. Will Glenn, our Communications and Outreach Director, will facilitate.
Mayor, if I may interrupt?
Yes, please.
We have a Black History Month proclamation prior to the Morrisville 101 item.
I failed to update my agenda, so I apologize for that. So yes, I'd like to recognize Will Glenn for a proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, and thank you. I am honored to be here tonight to read the Black History Month proclamation. This thing is chock full of good, vital information. I won't prolong it with any commentary. I will say that when I'm done, I will highlight some of the things the town is doing throughout this month. Whereas, Black History Month is observed annually across the United States in February and serves as a celebration of African-American achievements, as well as a time to recognize the crucial role they have played in U.S. history. And whereas, in 1915, Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, noted African-American scholar and son of formerly enslaved people, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which is later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, or SALA. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week in February 12, 1926, which was celebrated the second week of February for many years, as this coincided with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. In 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month. And whereas, observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledges the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas, Morrisville is particularly fortunate to have a rich, diverse culture. The Shiloh Community was established in 1867, just 15 short years after Morrisville was chartered. Prior to the Civil War, 1861 through 1865, Shiloh was home to free African-Americans. During the month of February, the town has emphasized the importance and impact of Black history in Morrisville through the lens of the Shiloh community, by highlighting historical markers and Greenway signage through social media and other resources. And whereas, we are immensely proud of our history and diversity, and will continue taking on the challenges to advance reforms and break down barriers, recognizing that despite progress, racial prejudice still exists in America. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize February 2022 as Black History Month, and encourages all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. And that'll be sound by Mayor TJ Colley and Eric W. Smith, our town clerk. So I do want to take a second to highlight some of the things that we're doing here in the town throughout this month. I think we're saying that we're highlighting both the past and the present throughout the month. So the present is going to feature us, we're featuring, rather, black-owned businesses twice a week throughout February. We're listing a photo of the business on their website, street address, and also tagging them on social media. And I would pause to see if you actually see that post. We want you to share that and like it if you get a chance to. For the past, we're highlighting more specific Black history. We're doing that once a week on Fridays. We're also shining a light on things that are already present, like the Shiloh community historical markers on the Shiloh Greenway. And finally, we're highlighting and sharing things that have happened throughout the Triangle on social media throughout the month. So please be able to look up for those items and participate whenever you can.
Okay, wonderful. If you want to take us right to our second presentation with the Morrisville 101 graduates, we appreciate it.
Exactly. I am also honored to stand here tonight to, I guess, to finally honor our graduates of our last Morrisville 101 Academy, Citizen Academy. I say "finally" because we tried, there was a couple of meetings ago, but we weren't able to meet in person. I will ask our graduates to please stand, if you would, and kind of line up on this side of the room while I call your names. If you could please also space yourselves out six feet apart, if you're able. I'll say for those in attendance and those watching online who may not be aware, our Morrisville 101 is the annual Citizen Academy. It teaches our students about Morrisville government. It's for those 16 years of age and older. We do it normally in five sessions consecutively on Wednesday nights. I do want to add that it's free, so look for that to come out again this summer. It's normally in the fall. We pushed it back a little bit this year so we can get it in person instead of virtually online like we did last year. All right, so I'm going to call the names of those here and those who couldn't make it this evening, so we recognize as well. So when I call your name, if you could get your certificate and kind of go on the stage, just space yourselves out as you line up as well. All right, Michael Backus. Nope, nope. I'm sorry, Mike. Can you get to that? All right. In absentia, Elizabeth Dan, Kuswara, Kotha, and Remy Mako. So Josh Michael. Also in absentia is Harika Magundo. All right. Bino Pandy is here tonight. The next person is not present, we'll be calling. And that's Gopinath Paramavissam. Mr. James Simmons is here tonight. In absentia is Sudhir Toware. And we have our couple, O'Neil Thacker and Romi Thacker. I'm going to ask our students to kind of, if you could step down to the bottom row there. And we're going to get our council to kind of come back on the very top to fill in behind them for the photo. For a brief photo. Congratulations to you all. Thank you.
We're looking forward to future graduates as well. You guys have joined a kind of elite group, so thank you very much for learning about the town and being part of our future. At this time, we are at public address. Is there anyone signed up for public address in person, sir?
No, sir. There were no, there were no individuals signed up to speak in person.
Okay. Is there anyone in the room who wanted to speak who didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing none. Were there any email comments received?
No, sir. There were no comments received via email.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 11, Future Meetings, Events, and Citizen Involvement Opportunities. Western Marine Farm and Morris Market is every Saturday from 9:30 a.m. until noon on Town Hall Drive. Exciting event coming up. We will be hosting a live virtual COVID-19 Q&amp;A session on the Engage Morrisville Community Engagement Platform on Tuesday, February 22nd, from 2 till 3 p.m. Dr. Nicholas Turner, a Duke University infectious disease specialist, will engage with Morrisville community members and answer all questions about the COVID-19 virus. Attendees must visit engagemorrisville.com and register on the platform to take part in the Q&amp;A session. The purpose of the engagement session is to give residents and businesses within the Town of Morrisville an opportunity to gain the latest information about COVID-19, while providing the opportunity to ask questions they may have to help keep them safe and their families safe. And a little save the date, please note the date for our next white goods collection. It will take place on Thursday, March 10th. At this time, I'd like to recognize my fellow council members for comments. I'll start with Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thanks, Mayor. For me, today's comments is more about, I've been seeing a lot of Red County School Board, especially putting a cap on Parkside Elementary, and wanted to take this opportunity for next meeting that we have in 15, like a brainstorming session of what are our options, what we need to do as a council, write a letter, have a meeting with them, because Adams Elementary is far. And so basically, I'm not here for, like, discussing because that's the form that I think we should have that on the agenda to talk about it and take action items. I know MPAC did talk about it, but I think it's upon our council to make a call as to what's the next step to basically appeal this.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself.
So thank you, Councilmember Garamella, for bringing up this important, I believe it's a timely issue that we should try to fit it in as soon as we can as a council. The kind of action a council can take with this is a letter to the school board defining the optimal situation, maybe some options they could consider. Also, we can engage with the public and find out more from them through our committees as well as public comments. So there's a lot of discussion, I think. Schools are very important to each of us and the community. I would like to take a minute to say congratulations to the town and to our cricket community on our announcement last week. It was really exciting to see our town in so many different venues, news channels, social media. It was really an exciting day, and I know we have a lot of work ahead to get us ready for the first game in 2023, but Morrisville's on the map, so congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much to the staff for supporting this effort. Yep.
Okay. I'll go, and then it'll be Councilmember Fender. I'm going to echo a little bit of what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson just said. I would like to thank Major League Cricket, American Cricket Enterprises, Triangle Cricket League, Wake County, the Morrisville Cardinals, and our staff and countless others, past and present, who are making possible the expansion of Church Street Park to better meet the needs and wants of all of our residents. Our parks and recreation amenities and offerings are constantly evolving, and I look forward to our continued efforts to meet the wishes of our residents. Councilmember Fender.
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Okay. And then Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments, but first of all, great job on cricket. We're very proud, look for the future. My comments on schools, I was going to make it's done. I went to the Wake County Commission meeting yesterday, and they talked about affordable housing and grants. I'd like our council to sort of, staff to follow what's going on in Wake County and see where Morrisville can be involved. And to the staff, I'm just curious, and also the council, are we following the discussions taking place between Wake County and Raleigh and health officials about our own mask mandate in Morrisville because we signed under the orders? That's something to think about. And I want to thank NC Vet Business Association for hosting an event today where we heard from Mike Ariola and John Woyak. He's from the SBA. John's from the EDPNC, so I'm going to send the slides to everybody in the chamber to pass that on. And happy 12-year anniversary to Pastor David Jones from the Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. My last comment, I just want to let the community know that we often hear Mayor Protam Johnson talk so much about Pancreatic Cancer Network, and it means a lot to me, the work that she and her family does, but just this last week, many of us in the technology community received a shocking news that Mennoz George, the founding CFO of Red Hat, passed away at the age of 54 of pancreatic cancer. He was a friend of our families. Our daughters actually went to school together, and under his leadership, he took the company from $5 million to $5 billion, as he was one of Bob Young's first hires, to their successful IPO. And he was the founding member of Ty Carolinas and served as a mentor to many venture capitalists, investors, businesses, stabilizing revenues, and helping people along the way. The last time I saw him, he said that he was so grateful to be blessed by the grace of God, to help prodigies and mentor entrepreneurs, and he was just so very proud of the region. He was a really great leader in our Indian-American community. So I just wanted to just say that today, that, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to fight pancreatic cancer. We pray for his wife Sheila, his daughters, his children Rachel, Sarah, Izzy, and Thomas. And I know that it's a huge loss to the technology and innovation community, to the state of North Carolina, but in his short life, he was able to create, through his leadership, thousands of jobs and do so many great things. So I just wanted to say that for the public who might be listening tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Okay, thank you. And I am deeply saddened to hear the news, Steve, but as you can imagine, I've heard stories like that over and over in the last 20 years. And yeah, more needs to be done, and that's why as the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we here locally are a group of volunteers that are helping to do the best we can to raise money for research. So thank you for mentioning that because it's important, and I'm deeply sorry. I really don't have any other comments tonight. One comment I did want to make to council is I sent everyone an email about council's participation in our stewardship program. Council does a litter sweep once a quarter, and I sent an email, so just want to make sure you get that on your radar, and hopefully we can get together and do our part again for our stewardship program. And for the public that wants to know more about our stewardship program, it's an opportunity for organizations or groups or neighbors to get together and help us here in the community through litter sweeps, storm creek cleanups, and I think whatever else our staff has on the agenda, from planting maybe flowers in the spring, we can use all the help we can. So please contact any one of us or our staff to learn more about our stewardship program, and you'll see council out there, hopefully in a couple of weeks, doing our part as well. So, thank you.
Great. Town Manager Page, comments from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I will circle back to the planned budget brainstorming, general follow-up after our winter meeting. Thank you for the opportunity. As we held our winter meeting, council expressed a strong desire to be together as you continued your discussion and brainstorming of the winter retreat. We also committed to you during that winter meeting that we would put some things together for you to help advance your conversations. You did receive today from Michael James, the ARPA survey, which is the first of two surveys that we've put together in an electronic format that makes it very easy for you to fill it out. So you should be looking in your email today for a survey from Michael, and you will be able to fill it out electronically, and he has asked for that information by next Monday, and we will compile that information to bring back to you for your collective look at that information. We are finalizing a second part of the survey, which is general budget brainstorming, which we will also put together in an electronic format. It's just easier for you to complete, and we expect you will get that next Monday when you finish the first survey, and we'll ask you to fill that one out and have it back to us by the 21st of February, and then we will be prepared to share all of that information with you at your February 22nd meeting. We also plan, we had some discussion about getting engagement from our community. We are putting together the budget portal information to open that will have some of the same questions that we are asking you, so you'll have information from the community to compare with some of your answers. All of that, we will keep the portal open longer, but we'll be layering information on to continue your budget discussions. As you talk about your work session item, that will be how we'll be able to frame how you want to continue to be productive in following up on the winter meeting presentations as we prepare for our budget. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions, or we could handle that during the work session.
Anyone have any questions at this time? Okay. Seeing none. We're moving a little ahead of schedule, but we're scheduled for a break before our next item, so why don't we go ahead and take a 15-minute break now to keep things moving and breaking up? So let's reconvene at...
Can we take a 10-minute break and move on?
I'm sorry?
Can we do a 10-minute break because we're just hardly 20 minutes into the meeting?
Are we okay with a 10-minute break, or would you like to take 15?
I'm okay to keep going, just because...
I was going to say, why are we taking a break already?
Exactly. I'm fine going.
Yeah. I have to acknowledge, I asked the mayor to abide by breaks, but if count...
It's up to you, it's up to the group. So if you want to keep going, we'll just keep going.
Let's keep moving.
We're on a roll. Let's keep moving. So we'll take a break after this. We have one work session tonight, and it's a meeting options discussion, so why don't we go ahead and get that going? I'll pass it to, I think, Town Manager Page to sort of set the stage for discussion, if that's all right.
Thank you, Town Manager. Happy to do that. And I want to first express thanks for all of the council members being here tonight. It was important to have this discussion with you in person. I'm sorry, Councilmember Rabadi is not well today. I did speak to her earlier today and have her feedback to provide and share with you as council discusses this item. So as we have, as we came back from the holidays, we stepped back and really tried to be very cautious again with the expectations of spike after the holidays, in particular with a more contagious, although less severe, variant. And we've done that for the safety of council staff and for our community. And we have held remote meetings, and as we all know, we converted our retreat into a virtual to, again, continue to be safety. What happens behind the scenes, though, is staff, and it's not about staff work, but I'm just trying to give you context, has to do a lot of duplicative work to adjust the agendas, to reflect roll calls and those types of things. And so we end up doing work over and over and over again as we change the type of meeting that we're going to host. In addition, it could potentially harm the transparency to our public of how council's going to meet, where they're going to meet, if they have opportunities to be here or not. So I did ask for council to discuss what your expectations and desires for coming together in a in-person session, how long you want to do that, what are the issues and concerns. We feel we can provide a safe meeting environment here, but recognize everybody feels differently about where they are on this topic. So we're seeking some additional guidance and an understanding of how long council may want that guidance to be in place, and what we're using to make those determinations so that we're able to answer to the public and plan accordingly best for you. As much as with Town Council, we have lots of advisory committee meetings that are seeking some guidance and direction in that your actions, we have typically followed council's actions for our advisory committees and really want to be able to provide them some better definitive guidance as well. So that's the groundwork for the discussion, I hope council will happen, happy to help participate, as I expressed to the mayor and the mayor protam, is we don't have any metrics in place for what we're dealing with now. The metrics associated with our state of... The metrics associated with our state of emergency are really related just to mask wearing, not meetings. And the, the statistics are, what we're experiencing with Omicron is different than when the state of emergency was put in place. I do have some updated data. It has continued to improve, but we are not near where the state of emergency metrics are. I did speak to County Manager Ellis this morning. What I have been told about a meeting with Raleigh is it was a briefing discussion. No action would be taken. They are still evaluating information as well and the, the Wake County order includes Morrisville as well as some other municipalities. So they would be communicating with all of us, not just one municipality in Wake County. But no action as, as I am aware of it at this point in time.
Okay. So now I'm going to open up discussion. Essentially, I think we all want to provide a safe environment. Staff has indicated that they're able to do that, but we want everyone to feel comfortable being here and there's different levels of ability to work together well in person versus hybrid versus all virtual. So we'd like to discuss that and where we want to come together and what our expectations and how much grace we're going to allow to our fellow council members depending on circumstances as they arise. So I would like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson.
So just a couple of comments. I think Martha, you, you hit on something when you talked about, yes, the numbers and the metrics that we're all looking at, those numbers are coming down and they're getting better, but there's still a ways to go. And so I think this conversation that we have here tonight is important because I think we all realize the work that we do for the public needs to be in the public. And we've heard from people that want to be able to attend our meetings and be able to, although nobody spoke here tonight for public comments, but they want the ability to be able to do that. So I think we all recognize that and know that. I, I'm just not sure we're there yet. So I think, again, this, this, this conversation's important, but I think we need to have this conversation again in a couple of weeks when, when things change because we know they're going to change. They've changed so frequently over all these months. You know, when I, when I looked to last summer, when we thought we were really coming out of this and I, I almost, I felt comfortable being without a mask, you know, out with family members and, and others, and, and now I don't feel comfortable doing that. So, so I think what, I, I guess what I'm saying is I think we have, we have to have this conversation again in a couple of weeks. I think to be safe, the, this hybrid method that we have, we have worked in maybe is the best thing to continue. Some of us feel comfortable. I, I've attended in person every time we could, as soon as we could, and I'm comfortable doing that with a mask on, but maybe the option of having a hybrid at least for the next couple of weeks would be a, a, a safe option for all. Just my only comments right now and I want to hear from others as well.
Yeah, I think we're going to have a couple of rounds probably.
Yes, I think so.
I would like to recognize Councilmember Garamel, please.
Yeah, no, I agree. Martha, like in terms of transparency, you're saying like, I, I think we have been doing meetings as conducted and everything is broadcasted and I, I feel like COVID or no COVID did not stop the council from attending the meetings. You know, the business was going on thanks to the staff, the approvals and the planning and public works. Every department was working all throughout the COVID. And I agree because the numbers keep changing, the tests are not that concrete. Like, you know, I've seen people saying they got negative after a couple of days, it's positive and it's, it's too flaky. I, I'm open for hybrid because it, it changes person to person. If something changed and that person should at least have the ability to attend the meeting in a hybrid mode so that he's not, you know, absent. You know, we value every council member's comments and ideas to the table. I know it is overhead to the staff, but it's the era that we are in, we don't have an option but to continue what we are doing in every form or shape.
Thank you. I saw Councilmember Scruggan Johnson next and then Councilmember Rau, please.
Thank you. Well, as some of you can see, majority of us are wearing N95s this evening because the recommendation by the CDC is a KN95 or an N95 due to the Omicron spread potential as well as the infection rate. Whether you are vaccinated or not vaccinated, you can still get it with this variant. And it really concerns me. What concerns me is similar to what Councilmember Garamella said. You could test negative. We could all come into this room and test negative and then one of us might be positive in two days at no fault of anyone's. But there is no good test at this time that really gives us that complete assurance of what's going on. We have to self-manage our own level of risk. What I would like to see is the ability to continue hybrid as needed. I think that if we have the, a lengthy meeting, it's really hard to wear these N95s for a lengthy meeting. So I'd like to see our business meetings under three hours. And I mean it this time, not wink, wink. We need to keep it focused and short. If we need more time to discuss, we can give ourselves more time, but I think it's important for those meetings that we have in person to allow us to be able to engage. With the work sessions coming up, to be honest, I think it'd be better for the next one to be completely virtual. That would give us a little bit more time, but it would al- always level that playing field. Hybrid is really hard. My husband is a teacher and he has had to teach all online. He's had to teach hybrid. He's had to teach live classes. Hybrid is the most difficult format of a meeting, of a lesson, of a class. So if we could do one or the other, that's ideal, but unfortunately, we might have to do more hybrid meetings in the future. I see business meetings as needing to be done in person if possible and work sessions could be done virtual because then we don't have to wear a mask. We're a little more at ease and we'll be able to engage a little bit easier and for longer discussions as well. So that's it for now. I'll let someone else take a turn.
Okay. Councilmember Rau, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Oh, thank you. I, I think that for me, I, I, you know, it's really important that we listen to council members and their comfort levels. And obviously I think, you know, hearing from my colleagues, there's some that would feel more comfortable doing a hybrid format. For me, and just, it's just my opinion, I, I prefer either staying all virtual or doing in person because I feel like it's really hard when we've done the hybrid, when I think back, you can't, well, some, you can see the person when they talk, but I just feel like it, it, it seems very different than it's in the moment. And for the mayor to run the meeting, it's a little bit tougher, not tougher, but it just feels like it's a challenge because when we've done it, you have to see, look at them and say, you know, so-and-so has a point. Sometimes you may not see that and they feel like he's not getting, you know, he's not recognizing me, you know. On the other side, they're frustrated. So I don't know how we work through that. I mean, maybe it's a good idea of doing the work sessions virtual and then doing the hybrid. Like for me, I get, I, you know, like today I wanted to take my mask off when I wanted to speak because I speak better without a mask, but I didn't want to offend other council members or staff members by doing that, so I did it. But I got to be honest with you because I speak a lot and I, I just don't like speaking with a mask. I know none of us do. I have a hard time hearing some of you when your mask's on. I've heard this from the public as well. So I think that that, that, that to me is just, I'm just throwing it out there, just different things to think about, you know? Sooner or later, you know, maybe the, the numbers will come down to the point where we are comfortable doing that. And then the other component is the public because many of them feel like, some of them want to start coming, they want to start speaking, they want to see us. And even though we're being transparent and we're delaying, you know, we're talking to the public, we feel like they're not as much a part, you know, of our decision-making. So those are some things to think about. So I don't know whether, does it compromise, you know, whether we could go virtual for the work sessions and then try hybrid and limit the hybrid to like maybe three hours, two and a half maybe, so we're not having to wear a mask for like five hours? That might be a compromise. So just, there's some things to think about.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I agree that this is a bit of a tough decision. However, I believe as elected officials, we have an obligation to be accessible to the public. And when we were all virtual, I felt like we were detached from the public and we had to, you know, kind of put Band-Aids and suspenders on our way with the portal, public comment portal to give the public an option to send us emails through that portal, but it's still not the same as being in person and having an individual that wants to make comments come up in front of us and give those comments. So, I mean, we're all here tonight, we're wearing masks, you know, the staff has said they feel comfortable that they have made all the provisions to make us as safe as possible. So I err on being in person. For me, I can't, I like to see body language. I think it makes us more productive and efficient by being here all together. Now granted, I understand there are some individuals that could have health issues and I definitely respect that. And so I think, you know, we do need to, as you said, Mayor, have the grace to understand individuals that, you know, do not feel comfortable being here, but I don't think we should abuse the hybrid system or option just because, and someone stay home just because they don't feel like coming in and being in person. We owe it to the public to be here and be accessible to them. So I think we, we could, we should allow the hybrid. I, I just don't think it should be abused. I understand if individuals have health concerns where they don't feel comfortable. Saying that, work sessions, I strongly am against having a work session virtual because a work session means we're here to work. And if we are all on the computer, it is just so difficult to collaborate and communicate with each other. I just feel like it's just a very inefficient way of trying to accomplish a task. So I would want to see the work sessions being done the same way we do our business meetings where we're in person, but allowing individuals that have health issues and don't feel comfortable to be at home. That's all.
Okay. Everyone's had a chance. I sort of started us off with sharing. Okay. I'd like to recognize town manager Paige.
I'd like to share Councilmember Rabadi's comments.
Oh, yes, please, thank you.
And perhaps make a few additional comments to help council with the discussion. So Councilmember Rabadi also suggested that hybrid may be the best option to address the needs of both. Her, her specific concern is being engaged and present during those meetings, on camera, attention, not working on other stuff. Those are the concerns that she expressed in a hybrid model, but did support flexibility. So I did want to share that information that she shared with me earlier today. So we have a scheduled work session for next, uh, next week on the 15th. Currently, it is mostly devoted to council, what was supposed to be in-person brainstorming discussion, council, working relationships. You have all in some form or fashion expressed that doing that is better in person. So that's just one of the factors that I think you need to consider as you, as you continue to your discussion. If you wish to go to hybrid, I think you need to address how, if or when you want to handle that, if you're going to change your stance on being all in person or continue to delay that until we would be more comfortable all in person. So that really, the length of that meeting is mostly in your control. Lori and I have a 30-minute presentation just to give you updates on our healthcare. That was one of the topics that we talked about in the budget preview. The February 22nd meeting is also at this moment very short, two hours or so. The, the primary item we have on that agenda is the, the redistricting post-census, a presentation from Rodney, Rodney Watkins on that. That was one of the items that was not included in the winter retreat. Can that be changed? Yes, of course it can, but your February 22nd meeting is also relatively short. March starts getting busy again. You do not have another scheduled work session until April.
Okay. So I believe I heard general consensus that hybrid is our preferred choice for business meetings. Maybe we can, I think we're all good on that. Ideally, we'd like to keep them three hours or less in all cases when we're in person for hybrid, just for the masks.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that?
It sounds like we're all pretty comfortable with hybrid for our business meetings, ideally keeping that three hours or less because of mask wearing. We might have to dig in a little bit more on the, the work sessions, especially the one coming up where the topic is mostly about body language and in-person. So we're sort of on both ends of the scale on that one. I would lean towards hybrid as much as we can, but allow grace to people who don't want to be here, knowing of course that there might be, they might feel like they're less seen and heard if they're not in the room with us, which is problematic. It's not ideal, but to continue the work, I, I just wanted to share that. And another thing about being, feeling the comfort level of being here in the room, we can make some expectations and some commitments to each other about if we keep our masks on the whole time or if we take a drink, if, what kind of mask we will wear and things like that. So that's something that we can try to create an even safer environment, even though staff has created a very safe environment. So those are some things that we can touch on as a group to try to increase the comfort level. We're not able to really address the masks other than having more frequent breaks like we're trying to do tonight. I'd love to hear more thoughts. I guess we do need to decide about the work session next week, whether or not it should be pure virtual or hybrid, if anyone has any thoughts on that. Mayor Protam Johnson?
So when, when we talked about changing our retreat and we turned it into a winter meeting, we moved a lot of items from that agenda because we wanted to be together to have conversation. And I'll be, I'll be very frank, I, I don't feel like virtual is a, allows for a really good method of having discussion. I struggle with us really having robust and important discussion virtually. It just, it's very difficult. So I was, I, I thought we were heading toward having the work sessions in person, but I also thought, and, and this is where it really is important that we have these conversations, that maybe at the work session, we would be able to spread out in the room a little bit more and that would hopefully help. So not only would we be wearing masks, but we'd be spread out a little more, maybe that would help folks. I'm fine with that. I, I really, I really prefer, I really prefer to be in person. I really, I really prefer, I really prefer to be in person each and every time we get together. And I realize others don't feel that same way, but that is my preference. And if we could maybe figure out a way to, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make sure everyone is comfortable to have that work session, I'd like to hear, because I'm happy to do that, and make sure that we can have discussion. Also knowing the fact that wearing a mask for a long period of time is difficult, and we could take breaks, like we said we would do a break in 45 minutes. We've gone over that already. But, you know, we could take frequent breaks if that helps, so people can go get a drink of water or even walk outside for a few minutes to take their mask off. So my hope is that we can be together.
I saw Councilmember Scroggy Johnson first this time, and then Councilmember Garamella, please.
Okay. I think that there is a lot of value in being in person. I'm here tonight because I value that. I think the general discussion and brainstorming needs to be done in person if we're really going to dig in. But I don't think it needs to be done, knowing more information from the town manager next week. It can be done in April. We do need information about the health care information. That really is a presentation with feedback and questions. In April, we're going to be in a different place. Next week, we're going to be in the same place. The hospitalization rates are still high. We are seeing people who are vaccinated get sick, sometimes hospitalized. I don't feel that it's going to be significantly different next week than it would be in April. I mean, there's, there's, springtime, people are healthier. We're in the middle of winter, where people spend a lot of time indoors, and this is when the infections are going to be spreading the most. So I think that's why I said all virtual, because of the fact that everybody's equal. But if you want to be in person, then I think we should have a hybrid session next week.
Councilmember Garamella?
No, I agree with what Vicki is saying, and in fact, I was having the same thing. This, like, the work session, we can always have it later. If you want to move the 22nd Rodney's to 15, and like fill up some of the things that we can knock off in two weeks' time, if things are getting better, yes. I'm more than happy to come in person. Plus, I cannot guarantee myself when I'll be sick. That's the thing that always it is. And I'm not worried about it. I'll try to make it. But if I'm not, then hybrid is the only way to go. But trying to see what we are able, what we are trying to achieve. I know the school board meeting is also critical. Please to discuss that next Tuesday, too, as time sensitive. But other things, I think, can wait for a couple of weeks. That's my thought.
Town Manager Page?
So recognizing that most of your agenda for the 15th would be your discussions with each other. That's what we've set the time aside for. And it is difficult to move items up rather than back. Staff is not prepared. In one case, staff will not be available. And the health insurance, if you're making options, that could move to the 22nd versus you'd have a very short meeting next week with just that. Just want to make sure you don't shortchange yourself in the budget process. That was the purpose of the timing of the budget process. You could, you could consider moving your work session to March instead of April, or, excuse me, February, if you wanted to buy another month. I don't know that a work session next week, without your discussion, if you don't want to do that hybrid, which I understand, you might want to consider then not having it at all, or moving it, and we could adjust that health insurance presentation, especially if council consensus is hybrid, to get you that information in two weeks versus one week. Just options to consider.
I do understand the hope that things are only going to get better, but we can keep on pushing it down the road, but you never know if there might be another transmissible delta, for example. So I'd be in favor of having the discussion on next Tuesday as hybrid. People who feel comfortable can be in the room, and those who don't, and we'll just have it as short as people want it to be. Shoot for two hours maximum. That would give us 90 minutes of discussion, including knocking the health off. But that was my third shot, because I didn't see anyone up. But I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender for her second comment.
Yeah, I think if, I don't, considering the content of what is scheduled for next week, I don't think hybrid would be very ideal if we're talking about, you know, brainstorming, how we communicate with each other. If we're not going to be in person, I agree with just pushing it off to another time. I don't think hybrid would be effective, given the content of what that, the intent of the meeting is.
I would generally agree, but when I see hybrid being said, what I understand that to be is everyone's going to try to be in person, and if for some reason they're unable to be here, be at comfort level, or if they've been exposed through no fault of their own, and they don't want to possibly expose other people, for example. That just gives us the grace that the work can keep going, and people can be at home if they need to be. So we don't have to always, at the last minute, try to shift and provide a hybrid option, for example. So I just want to keep the work moving forward, and I think we will work better together after we have the discussion about how we work together. Councilmember, I saw Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Scroggy Johnson, please.
I agree with Donna. Like, the one meeting that we are planning to have next Tuesday requires in-person. Hybrid will not work, especially when you are trying to have a better working relationship. And said that if that, people are not comfortable, even one, it basically negates the whole purpose of having a meeting, because it just doesn't solve the purpose. It still remains. So pushing that to a time when everyone is available in person is super critical, I feel.
Okay. Councilmember Scroggy Johnson?
So I think the agenda of the 15th is important. The general discussion and brainstorming is a council discussion where all seven really are needed. The school board discussion is timely. I mean, I think that there is great value in having that school board discussion. But the school board discussion, to me, is not as critical to have it all here together. We could have a hybrid. We've had good discussions. I think we're all pretty familiar with what's going on with the school board. But that's a council discussion that can be done virtually. So that's why, if we defer the all-council discussion so that everybody can be more comfortable, and that means more time has to pass, I think, and they know more, and maybe we'll all get another booster, but who knows? But the school board discussion, I think, would be really valuable to cover as soon as possible. I don't know. That's really, I need input from Councilmember Garamella on that one, because, I mean, Parkside is right in your backyard, and you hear a lot from your neighbors about the concerns about the cap school.
So I heard, I'll recognize Mayor Pretam Johnson for her second time around.
Thank you. So, Martha, I just want to be clear. So we're talking, we're talking a couple of things here. We're talking about maybe a hybrid on the 15th. We're talking about punting the 15th. And I understand Mayor's concerned about, if we punt it, what's to say something else doesn't pop up, and then what do we do? We're in, so anyhow. This, the majority of the discussion next week revolves around budget, and we're in budget season. So the longer we postpone or push that, how is that going to affect our other discussions related to budget? I mean, I thought there was a great need to have this budget discussion early in the process, so that we felt like we were giving input to the process. So I just, I want to make sure that I understand how that affects staff. And then, of course, there's other issues we want to talk about when it comes to brainstorming, like meeting with the school board, and the issues around that that are pretty significant and we need to talk about sooner than later. So anyhow, long story. So tell me, if we push the budget, we just pushed it from tonight to the, to next week, and now we're talking about pushing it some more, and that concerns me deeply.
So the budget timeline process was set up very specifically this year to allow more front-end discussion of council. That is what council indicated. They wanted before the budget was all put together, it's a good budget, but there hasn't been that discussion and influences that council has shared throughout the budget process. So we did, we did do that, and we are preparing these two tools for you to provide your budget input individually, that we're going to compile for you collectively to see. There will clearly still be a need for you to discuss all of that. So, and we're telling you that that information is going to come to you on February 22nd. That's sort of why we fronted your other discussion and council working relationships, so that we had time to give you your individual thoughts together, that we thought helped the efficiency of that process. Our departments start preparing their budget submittals Friday, and will submit by mid-March. So at that point, we are well on our way of trying to put it into a balanced budget framework. So this, from a staff perspective, the sooner we're hearing those influences and comments that council wants to provide, the better product we're going to be able to deliver to you. It doesn't mean it's not valuable later. Again, it's work and rework that we do to try to ensure that that input and feedback that you have is incorporated into our work as early as possible. I'll just comment on just a work session. Mayor Pretam Johnson referenced "spread out in the room." And as with any hybrid meeting we have, there are just trade-offs. Camera, audio, sometimes connectivity, recognizing council members. I think we're all familiar. Everybody's not on a same-level playing field, but it does give council the most flexibility. No question about that. And if we, as staff, know that's the way we're going to proceed, we're going to develop the agenda that way to make sure that Rule 19 is invoked, and there's roll calls that we're sort of not doing tonight. So that's the work that we'll do. If you want to meet in-person in a work session, what we've done with our staff meetings is literally spread us around this room. You would not be at a dais. You would be at tables like this, all around the room, where there would be microphones. You'd be spaced out further from people. We can, audio, video would be compromised. You would, we wouldn't be able to have screens, et cetera. It's been effective for our staff meetings when we've done it. But that would be the concept of a hybrid work session in this room, if it was all in-person.
Okay. And then, one, can we clarify one thing, too? Martha, you talk about on the 15th, we're going to have the budget discussion, the brainstorming, but we're not going to really be doing council working relationship. Didn't we say we would have that conversation later in the spring?
So one of the options that council asked me to follow up on was that retreat component of the winter meeting that we did not do. And so I was going to prepare to see what options council wanted to consider, March, May, and then, as we recognized, this conversation needed to happen. I just haven't asked those questions yet. But I'm going to need to know if you want to go away, if you want to stay in a hotel. Do you want it to be all weekend? Do you want it to be one day? Do you want it when it's cold? Do you want a tour? We've talked about outside. Outside is possible, but creates another whole set of factors that we have to consider to deliver a public meeting.
Okay. So that's not, that's separate from what we are doing on the 15th right now?
My last impression from the winter meeting was brainstorming and council working relationships conversation was going to be the primary topic next week.
Oh, okay. That's, okay. Well, glad we talked about it, because that was not my, that was not my take. Okay. I thought that was what we were, brainstorming was next week, but not council working relationship. I thought that was what we were going to do later in the spring, so.
Well, and that's.
I know.
Don't listen to me!
I know, I know. So that, that's, so I'm telling you all, that was my, I thought next week was very different from what, what we're talking about right now. So I do agree, we all need to be in person when we have the conversation about working relationship. I think that a hybrid method for that is going to be very difficult. Virtual, that's why we didn't do it during the retreat weekend, because we said it was going to be impossible virtually, and I, I thought we said we'd punt that discussion to later in the spring. But that's, that's my impression. So you're right, we need to have that discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garamella?
Yep. I mean, I think when you, when you look at last year, the last two years, we got a lot done, you know, given everything that was thrown at us. So I think the key is just to ensure that we, you know, if it's going to a hybrid, and we give ourselves the benefit of the doubt of trying our best to come in person, you know, maybe limiting the number of virtual events we do eventually. Hopefully, by April, things will be a lot better. You all have heard me say, some of you have heard me say this, but it's only a five- to six-month year. I mean, before you know it, we'll be cutting the turkey and lighting the tree. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it sounds so long away, but, you know, we have until June. It's already going to be February. It's already February. March, April, May, June, July and August, summer vacations, go back to school, September, October, we've got, you know, DiVale, Oktoberfest, November, December, you know, a lot of the work's already been done. So we have a very short amount of time to get a lot of work done. You know, we haven't talked about affordable housing. You know, we want, we have to come up with a plan on that. We've got plenty of work to be doing with our town center. Now we've got this curveball that's been thrown at us about Parkside, that Councilmember Garamella mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. With all the driving, we're going to have to do schools, and that affects our plans for development and our land use plan, and all the things. So I'm fine with doing hybrid or virtual or whatever, but I think we just need to make sure that we're maximizing whatever opportunities we have to get as much work done as we can between now and, you know, April. Because if we keep delaying stuff till April, then we're not going to have much time. And then we've got the budget, which is the big potato. So that's all I have to say. I think we just need to make a decision and move, keep working.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, no, I was confused when you said, like, we are discussing budget items, and I, it was my impression that we were not. So when you, like, my impression was that we were discussing council relationship and other things. So thus, I just wanted to ensure we are both, all are thinking the same way. Because we have not seen the budget, we have not seen what's up for in the agenda yet. So we're speculating.
Okay. Trying to wrap it all in a bow. I think I made it clear. I'm more in favor of moving forward. We have some. favor of moving forward. We have some concerns about, I guess, to dig in, what, what, what can be done? What's within our control to bring the comfort level that people could feel comfortable being here in person? Is there anything besides just more time that can get us there? Can we make commitments and spread out in the room that unless we are really not feeling well or have been exposed, that we can try to commit to meet each other to be in the room for two hours at a time? I'd, I'd commit to wear a mask the entire time and not eat or drink. I'm willing to spread out. That would make me comfortable. But I, I want to allow all the other council members to, to share if they're not comfortable, is there anything that we can do? And if there's nothing we can do other than wait, that's okay to say that. That's kind of what I heard, I think. So would, would those council members be comfortable if we kept moving forward in a hybrid session, knocking out some of this stuff, pretty much everything except for the council working relationships? Because that, I think everyone agrees, really need to have body language and be in the room. If we're okay moving forward like that, in hybrid, everyone try to be here, but if they can't, they understand that they're at a little nominal disadvantage or a real disadvantage by not being in the room with us. I will do my best to recognize people in a meaningful way. I can have the teams meeting right here so I can see when the chat says I'd like to share something. I think we can do that very well, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that they're engaged and they're valued. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I think it's very important that we're respectful of all the council and staff. It's not always a choice to come in or not. If I was exposed to a positive COVID individual, I'm not coming in. It's not because I, I want hybrid. It's, it's because I'm being respectful to my colleagues and staff. So we don't always have a choice to come in or not, or to have hybrid or not. It's not because we don't want to come in. There's a lot of factors and we need to have flexibility for hybrid. I agree that we need to keep the, the business of the council moving. The town needs to move. We have so many good things going on right now. We cannot slow down. But don't say that some people are choosing to do hybrid versus others because all of us are in this together and all of us have situations which are outside our control as well as inside our control. So I just, I think that's important.
I agree. That's very important. If one of us is exposed, it's our responsibility to not possibly expose others. So that's definitely one of the times. And are we as a council okay with that, knowing that that's the behavior we want? And
I just think we have a choice.
Do we set the expectation, do the, set the expectation that we know that that could happen to any of us or any number of us, but we still want to have the meeting anyway, knowing that if it's me, Mayor Pretam will run the meeting and I'll be not running the meeting. I'll be virtual, for example. So that's, that's the kind of discussion we have, the commitment we have to make to each other to show each other the grace that if someone can't make it for any particular reason, we all understand that that's not great for them, but they're doing it for us and they're still trying to participate. So, Mayor Pretam-Johnson?
So to kind of wrap it up maybe, I think what, what most of us are saying is we, a hybrid is the way to go right now. And, and maybe we're going to keep the fifteenth meeting on the agenda and, and keep it hybrid for those that may have to, to take it remotely. But I do think, so I think that, I think that's a good plan moving forward, but I do think we need to revisit this at some time. And I do think we need to give staff direction when we do want to be able to meet in person to all of us to have the conversation around the, the whole team working, how we're going to work as a team. And, and I, I was the one that asked during the retreat that Martha, start working on that sooner than later so that we could get a date on everyone's calendar. But if she's going to do that, it's got to be a time that we're all comfortable. And I'm not sure today we're going to be able to pick a time that's going to be comfortable. I'm hearing like April might be good, but maybe we come back and visit this again at the beginning of March, Martha, and, and then, and then look to schedule that conversation in maybe April or May?
So, so I've, I've got to speak up for staff. April is just about the worst time for staff because we're already preparing that budget to take a weekend. I mean, Jeannie and I are in here working on the budget virtually every weekend in April. So I'd be afraid we'd compromise our delivery of a budget.
Okay.
I did look at calendars and there is a, the, the, the March 25th meet, weekend would work.
Okay.
Or May. And, and May could be something, again, there's lots of things in May as well. But once you have a budget, you could have a workshop on the budget. Now, again, you then have a completed product in front of you. You, we will present that to you early in May. So I don't know if that accomplishes what you want. But May would be difficult for staff, just given the workload, once the departments submit those budgets.
Okay. So then let me throw this out there. Can we all, I don't even know what, what day is March 25th? Is that a Saturday?
Let me pull it up.
Friday.
Oh, it's a Friday. Oh, that's, that's
I, I just was looking at weekends because I, again, I don't have any guidance yet if council wants a whole weekend in a way or with tours and everything, or if it's just to talk with each other. I just hadn't gotten that feedback from council yet.
So I'll, I'll, I'll throw it out there. I'll be, I, I didn't think it was a whole weekend. I, I thought it was like a day. People are shaking their head. Okay. So I thought it would be more like a day. And if we, if we want to start targeting that weekend, I wouldn't make it a Friday. That sounds like a, I would make it a Saturday or a Sunday if we want to target that weekend and get it on our radar now and then revisit this conversation in a couple more weeks, maybe at the end of the month, beginning of March. And I'm going with the, things are going to get better and we're coming at the, coming to the end of this. And I'm, that's going to be my story until it all blows up.
It is Saturday, March 26th, if we're talking about a day.
And this would be for what?
Teamworking conversation.
Town Council Working Relationships.
Okay.
And I can verify availability with others outside of this meeting, if, if that's our approach to that, for, for that.
Okay. That seems like our plan forward at this time. Okay. Seeing nothing else. Thank you very much, everyone. That was a good discussion. Thank you for sharing Councilmember Rabadi's thoughts. Also helpful.
Excuse me.
Yes.
And I, I may want to take a break. We need some guidance on what to tell our advisory committees. That, that was part of this as well.
I wrote this.
That's a whole separate thing. So we had some preliminary discussions, town manager, Mayor Pretam and myself on this. And the town manager indicated that there were some committees who were choosing to meet in person already. So could you give us a couple of options, given our decision, what would work for, is hybrid even an option for committees?
It is, it is an option. It is not a great effective option because our audio and visual capabilities outside of the council chambers are much less. We are making improvements at the Historic Christian Church, but, but they're, they, they are less than optimal. And, and one of the challenges that we have, and, and again, it's sort of mentioned by Councilmember Rabadi about being present, is, is we have people in a hybrid setting that, I'll just say, are not paying attention to the meeting and in fact, sometimes disrupting the meeting. And when they are not on camera, you really don't know if they are attending the meeting or not. I mean, I guess that could be the same for council. If you're not physically on camera on a meeting, it's hard to verify if people are present and participating in a meeting. That is frustrating for the people that are participating in the meeting. And we've gotten that feedback. We get that feedback from staff, people that are talking to individual council members, and, and seats being taken up by people that are not participating. So it, it's just been a challenge. We, we did have, we, when we were in January, we told them they could meet remotely. Some postponed, did not meet. We had to meet remotely last year, last week, I'm sorry, two that are meeting in person this week by their choice. I think the guidance I would seek primary is it whatever any of them want to do or are you providing guidance? Because that will also be a challenge that we deal with the advisory committees as they compare what each other are doing. We don't think we have the capacity to allow them all to meet in here because they're scheduling conflicts with some of those meetings. And we do keep this a safe room because we limit its usage.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I think for the months of February and March, we would let each committee decide if they wanted to be in person or remote. And I would also, with the attendance policy, I would be a little lenient on that in case the committee decided to be face to face. But there were some individuals that did not feel comfortable being in a face to face situation.
Thank you, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. We have not been enforcing attendance policies and that's been part of our challenge. People are not participating either way, but we're not enforcing our attendance policies.
Mayor Pretam-Johnson?
So, okay, now we're going into a whole nother, okay, let me, I make two, two kind of buckets of comments. One, I think we cannot, if we're, if we're going to give each other the ability to meet in a hybrid fashion, we have to allow the same or something comparable to our committees. And so if it's not, I can't, we can't force them to meet in person if we're not forcing each other to meet in person. I, I, I just don't, I don't think that's fair. So I think those committees that want to meet in person, I think that's fabulous. I give them credit and I don't think we should stop them from doing that. I think that's fine. I think for the others, if, you know, we, we allow them to meet virtually for, for just the time being until we come back and revisit this again in a couple of weeks. That would kind of be my comments on that, on that part of it. But then on the other part of it about, you know, folks being present in a meeting, I do think we as a council need to make some kind of comment about if you are going to participate virtually, you need to participate virtually. We, Kimberly recently had a fabulous sustainability virtual meeting that was wonderful. And there were folks on that call that, you know, were, were allowed to put in questions. And one of the questions, or several of them put in was about how do I get on the Environmental and Stormwater Committee? So there is interest from others in the, or there are, there's interest from others in the community to participate in our committees. And if we have somebody on a committee now that's not even participating virtually, I think we do say you need to step away because there are others out here that want to participate and I want them to have that opportunity. So I hear we have been very flexible and I'm 100% behind that. But you need to be present in a virtual meeting. I'm sorry, that, 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 again, you're taking a seat away from another resident that would want to participate and I, I think that's a, a problem.
Councilmember Garamella, please, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah. I thought the whole understanding this was a short meeting. We're already an hour and a half into it. So my, my two comments or one comment would be, is there any downside of doing virtual for advisory committees? Because something which is easy for you guys, you have done it until unless someone wants to come and if you feel like it is important. But just keep it virtual for one month.
The downside is some of them want to meet in person. So hybrid is the option.
But that's their option, that they want to be in person.
Correct.
But we can tell them, go virtual too. There's not like, you know, they want to this one. It's like, because it is more work for you guys. So you can just tell them simply, go virtual. There's not, no downside on that, I see.
Can they all, do they all have the ability to meet in a hybrid fashion? I think that's really the question.
We can, we can provide a hybrid environment. It's not in this council chambers alone.
Got it.
And again, just with, as with council, there are just trade-offs to quality of communication and participation.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
The only thing that I saw good about the virtual advisory meetings, I liked them when they were streamed online initially on the Facebook. And then we stopped that. But I don't know if there's a way we could, maybe it's too much work for the staff. Just, I think it's really good to be able for even the council members to be able to look and see what's going on with planning and parks and rec and smart cities and sustainability and for our residents. If we're going to be, so that's just something to throw out there. I don't know if that's possible. I'm fine with them. I think we have to hold ourselves to the same, same standard. It's not fair for us to say, well, we're okay to do hybrid and then, you know, you all, you, you all can only do virtual. So maybe we give them that option. But I would like to see whether we could go back to, you know, at least streaming them on our site, the, the meetings. Maybe it's too much work and we can't do it. But we went from, you know, being able to see it and then these meetings are going on and you have to come in person. So.
Well, it was many years before the council meetings were streamed and now it's kind of a, a given. So, but it might take a while for us to get all the county committee meetings that way. But I would think, I did like the initial, let them decide for themselves in February and March and then revisit. So that seems like it gives them the opportunity to be in person if they feel that's how they're most effective. If they have a lot of people who don't feel comfortable, they can go to virtual. We'd encourage them if, to go fully virtual, if they have a number of people who are kind of mixed. Because, I don't know, just because, and just encourage people to really be engaged for those two hours of that meeting and try to keep your cameras on and paying attention and taking part. Because I know we all try to do the same thing there.
So if I could suggest, if, if council wants to consider, and again, I'll poll council after the fact, just again, to try, try to help wrap this up. Hybrid options for everybody. If council's going to attempt to meet in person March 25th or we're going to plan it that way, perhaps that's the time for that check-in. Maybe not in two weeks or a month, but, but at the end of March, so that we can consistently share information about how we're providing our meetings. Just, just a thought. That also gives our advisory committee meetings, some that don't meet except every other month, some time to know how they're going to handle that.
Does that work for everyone? Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Hopefully you staff got what they needed, another good discussion on that topic. At this time, we're done with the open business?
Thank you.
Anything for the
Thank you for the helpful discussion. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything for the good of the order before we look towards the closed session? Okay. So at this time, we have one closed session this evening to discuss matters related to economic development. As we have no plans to conduct any further public business after our closed session, I'd like to thank you all for watching or attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope to plan, you plan to join us again. We do have a work session next Tuesday, February 15th. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisfield.org or visit www.townofmorrisfield.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I would ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor and council, I'll move a Mayor and council, I'll move us into closed session, if that's okay. Pursuant to, may I move us into closed session?
Yeah, it's right on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Pursuant to 143.318.1184, I move that we go into closed session to discuss economic development matter.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0. It is 7:30. We are now in closed session. We need to go ahead and clear the room. We're going to take a.